Ready to get started this evening? Oh boy, yeah, I love to see the smiles and hear the discussion and we'll just see how long that lasts. That's right, that's right. And you know, it's one of those things that like, you know what you're getting when you're coming to Revelation class, right? Like until the last couple chapters, we're trudging, we're trudging through this, we're going uphill and we're trudging through a swamp of all the ugh, the hard stuff. The stuff that we don't usually talk about in our daily like Christian walk or in typical Bible studies or, I mean really, you think about it, whether it be in Paul's writings or even in the Gospels, how much do we talk about persecution? Like there's a couple of warnings from Jesus, right? And then Paul talks about some of his own experiences, but it's not like there's whole chapters devoted to it. Here we have chapters upon chapters of judgment and persecution. I mean, it's both sides. So it's pretty heavy stuff. And so it's just important for us to recognize that. And, and you know, that's add a layer of confusing symbolism and 2,000 years of interpretation from every which angle. So yeah, that's a, that makes for some pretty serious looks within a two hour period. And which by the way, each of you should absolutely get a medal for just hanging with us every week. Two hours, that's like, I don't know, I'm just coming into this with a whole lot of appreciation like I usually do, but I'm just voicing it tonight because yeah, you guys hang in there for two hours on a Sunday evening.
For over a year.
Didn't have to say it like that, but for over a year. For years, right, some of you? Oh boy. And on that note, let's pray. Father, we thank you for fellowship. We thank you for laughter and personalities. Thank you for what you do in bringing people together as a church. We thank you for, thank you for your word, that your spirit speaks and has so guided these authors to write your words. That 2,000 years later, we can read the vision that you gave John and be inspired to change, to live to the fullness of this life that you've given us. A fullness that is defined by you and not our culture or the world around us. That it's this vision, this prophecy, this book that helps us, helps to clarify and to sift these things. To separate the wheat from the chaff. We pray that tonight, as in every night, we come together to study that your spirit would move within us, change us, continue to transform us by the hearing of your word. And that as we study that help us to see these things around us, the opportunities to minister and serve in your name. No matter what is going on in the world around us. To you be the glory now and forever. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, well, according to my notes, we left off with verse 11. Moving right along here. Week three, verse 11. Let's not do the math on when that'll make us get done, but that's all right. I'm still holding to the semester. So, all right, reading verse 11. Actually, just backing up to eight, "The beast that you saw was and is not, and is about to come out of the abyss and go to destruction. And those who dwell on the earth, whose name has not been written in the book of life, from the foundation of the world, will wonder when they see the beast, that he was and is not, and will come. Here is the mind which has wisdom, the seven heads are seven mountains, on which the woman sits, and they are seven kings. Five have fallen, one is, the other has not yet come. And when he comes, he must remain a little while. The beast, which was and is not, is himself also an eighth, and is one of the seven, and he goes to destruction." All right, clear as mud? I don't know if that became more or less confusing reading it in context. And so, so remember as we've been talking about before, so I write Rome up here as we were talking about like this is John's immediate context, right? And the whole approach that I have taken with this is that when we understand the context in which these words were given and written by John, that we can understand what that translates into today and even in a cyclical fashion culminating in the very end. So as we're talking about this, as we're going to talk about kings, we're going to be looking at Roman emperors. Okay? And how they fit in. So, yes, question. Just as we're talking, we're going back to verse eight and talking about the book of life. Not necessarily like individual names, but in the sense that like Yahweh knew that there would be rebellion and that there by that there would be faithful. So, and this is kind of the stance that Mounts takes with it. "So the inhabitants of the earth stand in awe when they behold the beast; there are those whose names have not been written in the book of life, from the creation of the world." John is not teaching a form of determinism. So that term actually means that God had determined who would be saved and who would not. He's not talking about that. But emphasizing the great distinction that exists between the followers of the Lamb and those who give their allegiance to the beast. Right, absolutely. So from at the foundation of the world, that is when those names began being listed. Not that all the names were written at creation, but that they began compiling those books at creation. So, because imagine this, like we are all allegiance to something. It's either God or not. And so the way of Cain, the way of Nimrod, you know, the way of Nebuchadnezzar, like any of, you know, Ahab, just pick anybody, Judas. They have shown their allegiance. But in the same way, as Jesus illustrated the allegiance to the Father and the rest of the disciples showed their allegiance. David showed his allegiance. Not perfect, nobody is, except for Jesus, right? And so, but David showed his allegiance to Yahweh, a man after God's own heart. Esther, Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, you know, just going through the list of who they showed their allegiance to. It's either the world, which includes themselves, or Caesar's kings, emperors, money, or it's to God. And so by that, from the beginning, people were choosing. The moment sin entered the world, there was those who were going to be faithful and those who weren't. And mind you, like, we're talking about that on this side of the cross. But remember, our allegiance to Jesus as king is really proclaiming God as king. God has given this kingship to Jesus. So that's the thing, even when you go back to the beginning, it's allegiance to Yahweh or not. And so in the revelation of him sending his son, he has made it all the more clear and evident of those who belong to him and those who don't. Well, and that's what we talked about last week is that names can be blotted out of the book of life. We did in chapter three. In chapter three, we talked much more extensively about the book of life. And we even went back and read that last week. So we can go back and read it again. And it'll come up much later on. Does that throw once saved, always saved out the window? Actually, we talked about it a long time ago. I think with the, it is hard to defend concepts because there's not necessarily a verse that says that. That's a concept that has been drawn, it's a theological concept that has been drawn from, you know, inferred by certain scriptures. But I think with like the threat to be blotted out of the book of life, or even Hebrews six and just different places like that, that it does cast some doubt. Yep. And that's the, that's the interesting thing. We never talked really in terms of allegiance. I mean, really, we've reduced, you know, this, this beautiful act of redemption and eternal salvation to a simple like praying of the prayer, which is awesome. And that just illustrates kind of how easy that is to like come, walk through the door. But this whole like coming to Jesus or accepting Jesus as Savior, like it's also and Lord. And once again, we're using terms that are completely foreign to us. So we're accepting Jesus because because what we believe is that 2,000 years ago, the God of the universe who made everything recognized that humanity, as fallen as we were, needed salvation. Needed redeeming a reconciliating act. And so he sends his son to live a perfect life only to be executed, to be in the grave for three days and to come back to life conquering, overcoming one of the curses of our fallenness, which is death. And in doing so, has earned the kingship as bestowed by Yahweh, the God of the universe. He has given this earth to him as his reward. And so when we commit to Jesus, we are acknowledging, we are pledging our allegiance to Jesus as our king. This is the scandalous message that Paul took throughout the Roman Empire. That Jesus is king, Caesar is not. This is how, this is the most aversive message in the world. And what's more is in pledging our allegiance to Jesus as king, we refuse to live in the ways of the world. In all the ease of its temptations and distractions that we have manufactured ourselves by living in a materialistic society in concepts of money and any other construct, right? The 40 hour week or retirement or you know, you just go through the whole list. And every society has had their own to distract them. We live as part of a kingdom. So we are ambassadors, emissaries of the king while we are in this world. And it's not just other people, but there's other forces that don't like this. But those forces, we don't have to worry about because Jesus has also overcome them. And the people, well, we get to enlist them into the kingdom, that their names could also be written in the book of life. So really, it's recognizing that we're in enemy territory, but we know that eventually this whole territory is going to belong to the rightful owner. And so what we're reading here is the reclaiming of it. This is the battle plan of the God of the universe, that the son, that the king gets to break these seals and kick this off and get this going. So when we accept Jesus as Lord, like Savior is recognizing what he has done. Lordship has everything to do with allegiance and proclaiming his kingship and living in loyalty in faithfulness to that kingship. Wish I would have heard that one when I came to Christ, right? When you hear the God, like this is the good news. Like that's the cool part. That this isn't some novelty piece. This is part of the good news that Satan does not have free reign and rule over this earth. That his time is short because the king is coming. This is good news, that we are not just lost and wandering aimlessly through these, through our lives, but that we have a king to answer to and a king who is interceding on our behalf. And he's given us the gift of the Holy Spirit to guide us in conjunction with what the spirit is doing and everybody else that belongs to the kingdom. That's why when we talk about we have a mission and that we're disciples, because we're growing and seeking to grow into maturity. And along the way, we're also making disciples. Because that's furthering the kingdom. Right? And that's not earning, except what we're talking about in switching allegiance is betrayal. And mind you, what, this is what Jesus is saying to the church of Sardis is that he would blot their name out. So no, and that's the thing, like when we, this is a big book and it says a lot. And a lot of things that can go either way. At the end of the day, like even if like we talk about, oh, were they saved from the beginning or not? That doesn't mean that there is a freedom to sin. Right? Because Hebrews talks about that. What would you say? Or to leave God, right? Or to betray him, deny him, all of those different things. And so, so that's just it. Like there is, regardless of theological perspective, we are encouraging holiness and allegiance to Christ. If you want to get wrapped up in that or land in some level of circular reasoning, like which came first, the chicken or the egg, like be careful, like what is the benefit of it? But we also don't need to, you know, it's bad enough if somebody has betrayed Christ and to be like, well, they weren't saved from the beginning. It's insult to injury. And so we can just, because I mean, there's plenty of pastors that have fallen. And it's like, oh, wait a second, for all the baptisms that they did, like, do we need to redo those? Because if they weren't saved from the beginning, if they didn't really know, you know, it just, where does that end? There was an evil spirit that came upon him at different times and yeah, I mean, it's, that's a pretty interesting case. Anointed by God in service. So yeah, no, and there's a lot of things, I mean, once again, what we have much of the time is narrative. And then we do have some theological writing. But there's not as, sometimes we feel like there's too much information and then other times we're like, hey, wait a second, where did he end up? And we don't have a definitive answer. Right? Even for Judas. Now, refer to Son of Perdition, One Destiny for Destruction, like there's some things that we can infer there. But we're also not judged. And there's nobody that we really like should ever want to see end up in the lake of fire. I mean, that's, it's not where it came from, but it's definitely a part of that. Yeah, no, absolutely. And you know, and this isn't a new idea. It wasn't even new to the Reformation. You know, there was actually different schools of thought among Pharisees and even within the Sadducees. So, because especially in the first part, right, in the Tanakh and the Old Testament, there's different verses that could go either way on that too. Well, and that, so at the end of the day, hold on to Christ. Live faithfully. He is Lord, he is king, and our allegiance should be to him. Our actions should reflect our allegiance to him. And those aren't necessarily like all that there has to do with cultural Christianity, like read the Gospels. Even like Mike's sermon this, this morning. Right? I mean, he was really detailing what, you know, talking about what Paul, as he was talking to the Colossian church, what living faithfully looked like. Putting away these old and evil practices and embracing this life in Christ. Yeah, so, and here we go, and blasphemy of the Holy Spirit. So I actually, I take a little bit more of a contextual, like literal take of that where the, the context there is Jesus is performing healings and different miraculous signs, right? And the Pharisees accuse him of doing those things by the spirit of Beelzebub. Right? Basically the spirit of the devil. And Jesus responds like, hey, you can say anything you want about the Son of Man, but do not basically blaspheme the Holy Spirit. And so context there is attributing the works of the Holy Spirit to the devil and vice versa. So just, I tried to stick within that lane. And it would be real easy to, you know, kind of pick and choose from so many other things, including, you know, denying Christ or whatever. It's just not in view within that narrative. So that's me though. And I've heard plenty of other people talk about that and preach on it and so. Right, but I will not erase his name from the book of life, meaning that the name is in the book of life and that he would erase it. Sure, it's also a play off the, the name for Sardis and everything. So there's a lot more stuff there contextually and we can talk about that at the break. So. All right. Okay. Any other questions around verse 11, book of life? Yeah. Oh, here we go. No, absolutely. And that's where, as we read through the scriptures, like that's one, it's, that's the importance of reading scripture. Knowing what God has said, right? Knowing the testimony of the Gospels. And for those who did walk faithfully and obediently and in the wisdom and advice that God has given them to other followers. Yeah. We can follow that example, we can follow those instructions. So, so yeah, I mean, and this all goes into allegiance, right? And we go back and we read anywhere from the Sermon on the Mount, right? Any of Jesus's teachings, any of the private conversations that he had with the disciples. And that is what he is requiring of them is their allegiance to him. So, and that's what we can encourage. There we go. That's, thank you. Right around. So, so what Mounts talks about here, we now arrive at the heart of the riddle. "The beast himself is an eighth king, who is at the same time one of the seven. If the seven kings were specific Roman emperors, then the most likely candidate for number eight would be Domitian." This would identify the beast as the emperor reigning at the time, at the time John receives his vision. "Yet three times in the chapter, we are told that the beast is not. At the time of writing, the beast has not yet ascended from the abyss. He is an eighth in the sense that he is, he is distinct from the other seven." "He is Antichrist, not simply another Roman emperor. He is not a human ruler through whom the power of evil finds expression. He is that evil power himself. He belongs to the cosmic struggle between God and Satan that lies behind the scenes of human history. Yet he will appear on the stage of history as a man. He is of the seven, not one of the seven." "And that he plays the same sort of role as his earthly predecessors." So imagine like the dragon stepping into human form, fulfilling the role of the next Roman emperor. But that also makes him very distinct in who he is and how he operates. "So he himself, however, belongs to another sphere of reality. His period of hegemony is the great tribulation preceding the return of the Messiah." Uh, let's see, we talk a little bit about Nero here. So, this interpretation, it being Domitian, it requires no reliance upon the Nero ridivivus myth, ridivivus myth, there you go. So although its existence would aid in the understanding of John's prophecy of Antichrist. So Nero, the epitome of evil and the abuse of power, was, he lived and ruled, and is not. He's now dead. Yet according to the myth, he will return to life and once again seize power. Does anybody remember, we were talking about this in chapter 13, Nero died, and then there was all of these rumors going around Rome that Nero was coming back to life. And that he was going to reclaim power from some of those that had assumed power. So, so commentators who understand the eighth king as Domitian stress the early writers recognized a resemblance between Nero and Domitian. But since all the beast's heads were part of the same imperial system through which the evil intent of Antichrist found expression, we would of course expect the two prominent persecutors to be comparable. Okay, so, before we get into the next piece of this, just to kind of roll this back around, is that you basically have these line of emperors, right? And this last one that we're talking about is especially evil. He is evil incarnate. Whereas all these others have been, belong to the beast system, they themselves are not the earth beast that is being spoken of here. So when they come on the scene, Domitian, it is full-blown evil. Everybody was kind of part of the evil system, but then the last one, who is part of the others, is distinct in and of himself because he is pure evil. Well, it says that they were comparable, and so the one who was, is not, is to come, and so that will be like Domitian. And so they're kind of treating Domitian as like, like a return of Nero in that evil. But worse. Because at the time of writing, Domitian's in power, and John hadn't even seen the full extent of his reign yet. So imagine as if, you know, uh, no, let's not do that. Not in an election year, yes.
So when you say evil, evil toward who? Evil toward believers?
Believers.
Because there are some who may not think that he's evil.
Right. No, no, evil towards believers. This is written, this is written from a Christian perspective. Or seen from a Christian perspective. Yeah, no, the rest of the world could be like, yeah, take out the trash. All those subversive people who don't play along, don't live like us. So, so that's why I, I wrote Rome up here, is because, and the whole, this is where the rubber meets the road. As we are interpreting this, we're interpreting it in John's context. So we can figure out, okay, there was these line, this line of leaders, but then this last one is special. So he's like all the others, but he's different, right? And so, we can translate that into any system, government, political theory, right? Any type of government, anywhere in the world, and look at that. And so, is it following a pattern? But we can see this in a smaller sense, or in a culminating sense, leading to the very end. Where there will be a final eighth king. Or one of the seven, right? And so, this will be the Antichrist. When we talk about the Antichrist, that's who we're talking about here. He is the type, a type for, he, he himself was an Antichrist. But to study his reign and how he persecuted Christians will only inform really what for us to look out for in an Antichrist figure now and in the future, right? Yeah, so for, for us today, we've had, you know, you can look at the past six presidents. And then the seventh president that we're talking about is a president like the other presidents, oh, but things changed. Right? If, you know, so, you know, Germany in the 30s. It's not that there, there was a long line of chancellors before Hitler, but you know, if there was six before him, and then boom, he comes to power. Anybody want to say, oh yeah, he was just chancellor like all the others? Ain't nobody saying that, but he was still a chancellor. So in the same way, there's a president that's elected, and all of a sudden, it's like, hey, this country would be all a lot better without Christians. Oh, okay. So, and that's basically like what we're looking at, because with some of these other emperors, there was varying degrees of persecution of Christians. Sometimes there wasn't at all. Just because they were, you know, early on, they're just, it was insignificant. But then, as more and more got noticed, all of a sudden, you're experiencing more of that persecution and kind of reaching that peak in, well, Nero was just special evil. Uh, but then in Domitian's time, it becomes a full-on like, okay, we've had enough of this.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely. And so, actually, there's a few different places where there is the reference that like, Antichrist and many Antichrists have come, right? And will come. So, yep, and this is everybody that is fighting against the kingship of Jesus. So, yeah, so, so, this is, as we are getting into this, the beast, the beast, which was and is not, is himself also an eighth and is one of the seven, and he goes to destruction. And so this is actually just singling out that seventh king as wholly unique in and of himself. Now, now that we've established this, here's a little curveball. So a somewhat different approach holds that the beast is Antichrist in but two of his heads, successive, successive worldly kingdoms at enmity with God. Okay, so, the beast is Antichrist in but two of his heads. Okay, so only two of them are Antichrist. He was embodied in Antiochus Epiphanes. He does not now exist in the same malevolent form, but will in the future arise from the abyss in the person of the eschatological Antichrist. It is doubtful, however, that the essentially Gentile church in Asia Minor, at the end of the first century, would place into such an exclusive category a Syrian ruler who more than 250 years before had persecuted the Jews in Palestine. This is the story of Hanukkah. Right? Or what leads to those events. Antiochus Epiphanes, anybody, everybody remember that story? So, basically persecute the Jews in Israel at that time, and to such a degree, I mean, burning Torah scrolls, not allowing, you know, parents to circumcise their sons, not allowing anything, I mean, full-on projection of Hellenistic or Greek culture, including, you know, Greek gods, and even desecrating the temple itself, the altar by sacrificing pigs on it, and even setting up an image of Zeus, or what could have been Antiochus Epiphanes in the holy place. Full-on bad guy. So, they're thinking that like, potentially, is he the one that was? And somebody similar coming up could fulfill that role. Now, there's a few different instances here where different Roman emperors were candidates for that. Actually, 70 AD, some people actually think that for Titus responding to the revolt that happened, originally, be it either Nero or Caligula, they were actually going to set up an image of themselves in the holy place, in the temple. It never happened, but that rumor had started, and that's what led to the initial revolt, led to violence. So, that would be an interesting twist to this, the one that was, and it's coming back around. So, um, but Mount recognizes here that for a predominantly Gentile church by this time, probably didn't, they weren't thinking that way. Oh yeah, Antiochus Epiphanes, you know, probably not on their radar. So certainly the terrors of Nero, Nero's persecution in AD 64, which only a few years before had set the stage for Roman opposition to the Christian faith, would be a more likely historical expression of Antichrist. So if, if we believe that Revelation was being recorded in 90 AD, and Nero was persecuting Christians in 64 AD, right? So one who was, oh, look, here's Domitian and his persecution, it's come back around, oh wait, it's even worse. So that would kind of be the idea to that. We just wrapped up verse 11, sort of. Uh, so verse 12 and 13 of chapter 17. "The ten horns, which you saw, are ten kings who have not yet received a kingdom. But they receive authority as kings with the beast for one hour. These have one purpose, and they give their power and authority to the beast." Alright. So, Keener points us back to Daniel, chapter seven. So let's go there. Daniel, chapter seven. So Keener writes, "Ten horns represented ten kings," in Daniel, chapter seven, verse 24, "possibly successors of Alexander the Great's Greco-Macedonian kingdom. Most Jewish people in the Roman era, however, read Daniel's fourth kingdom as Rome. They might thus apply the description to Rome's client states in the east." So, Daniel 7, verse 24. Uh, starting at 23. "Thus he said, 'The fourth beast will be a fourth kingdom on the earth, which will be different from all the other kingdoms, and will devour the whole earth and tread it down and crush it. As for the ten horns, out of this kingdom ten kings will arise, and another will arise after them. And he will be different from the previous ones, and will subdue three kings.'" So, Mount points out, "The ten horns are said by the angel interpreter to be ten kings who as yet have not received their royal power. When they do receive authority, they will turn it over to the beast and join him in war against the Lamb. The ten kings are not the ten emperors of Rome, because unlike the Roman emperor, these have received no kingdoms yet." So that's a key detail here. "Nor are they the kings of the earth, who in chapter 18, verse 9, mourn the fall of Babylon. So many writers identified them as Parthian satraps, coming from the east in a massive invasion under the leadership of a revived Nero." So if you remember back to chapter 13, that was part of the myth, is that Nero would come back to life and would lead these kings of the east against Rome and reclaim the throne as Caesar, as emperor. So this would fit the context of the following paragraph, in which the ten kings and the beast destroy the prostitute city, Rome. So as we're talking about these kings, or these ten horns who don't have a kingdom, they receive authority as kings with the beast for one hour. These have one purpose, and they give their power and authority to the beast. So, in chapter 19, verses 16 through 18, so we can go there real quick. Oh, sorry, it's a chapter 17, verses 16 through 18. "And the ten horns, which you saw in the beast, these will hate the harlot..." So who's the harlot? It's the city of Rome. "...and will make her desolate and naked, and will eat her flesh, and will burn her up with fire. For God has put it in their hearts to execute his purpose by having a common purpose, and by giving their kingdom to the beast until the words of God will be fulfilled. The woman whom you saw is the great city which reigns over the kings of the earth." So, once again, this kind of lends a little bit more weight to the Nero myth, because the whole idea was that he was going to come back with ten kings behind him to reclaim Rome, even to the point of destroying the city of Rome. So, interesting that that was around at that time. That myth is not new. That myth was around in the first century by the time of John's writing. So it's kind of an interesting little intersect there. "So still others take them to be the governors of senatorial provinces who held office for one year. Whatever the immediate historical illusion, the complete fulfillment of the imagery awaits the final curtain of the human drama. Ultimately, the ten kings are purely eschatological figures, representing the totality of the powers of all the nations on the earth, which are to be made subservient to Antichrist." So, broadening that out a little bit, are these ten leaders who are giving their authority to the one Antichrist figure. So the number 10 is symbolic and indicates completeness. It does not point to ten specific kings, nor to ten European kingdoms of a revived Roman empire. European Union. So, just saying that it does not. But good. "All the forces that join with Antichrist rule but a short period. With one mind, they turn over their power and authority to the beast. They are willing colleagues who share the same hostility to Christ and His followers." And that's a key component of all of this, right? Is to see those, who is hostile to Christ and to the cause of Christ. We don't need to name names. So, any questions on that, on 12 and 13? A short time period. So, just with a lot of the other figure, you know, the symbolism and everything. I mean, even from Mounts, Mounts just kind of went the full spectrum of like, oh, it's ten provinces, you know, could be. Or 10 is just a number of completeness, right? Or representing the senators who are, you know, in office for one year, right? So, that one hour could literally just be a short, very short time period. Once again, just a reminder that whatever's gonna happen, can happen regardless of what I say. And so just because I teach it one way, does not mean it's exactly, it's gonna happen that way. The goal here, as we study this, is that hopefully when, if, if, or when, right? If these things were to happen in our lifetime, that the Holy Spirit within us start raising some of those red flags, and draw us back to Scripture to recall these things. And as we are moving through, we can talk about historical precedent, we can talk about, you know, myths of Nero and, you know, different things like that, and just be like, oh, you know, so if we hear something in popular culture, be like, well, that's interesting. That sounds a lot like something from the first century. Stranger things have happened, right? So, um, yeah. Any, any questions, 12 and 13? Alright, verse 14. Hey, look, a fun, positive celebratory verse. "These will wage war against the Lamb, and the Lamb will overcome them, because he is lord of lords and king of kings, and those who are with him are the called and chosen and faithful." Amen. So, if you remember, this is also a repeat of the seventh trumpet in chapter 11. Starting at verse 15. "Then the seventh angel sounded, and there were loud voices in the heaven, saying, 'The kingdom of the world has become the kingdom of our Lord and of his Christ, and he will reign forever and ever.'" Chapter 11, verse 15. And so here we're getting more into the details of this conflict. So verse 14 passes on quickly to the final conflict between Antichrist and the Messiah. "It is a promise of victory for the Lamb in the battle of Armageddon. The Lamb will overcome his adversaries, for he is lord of lords and king of kings." These well-known phrases emphasizing the sovereignty of God go back to Deuteronomy, chapter 10, verse 17, "Where the Lord God is named the God of gods and lord of lords." In 1 Enoch, chapter 9, verse 4, "The Most High is named lord of lords, God of gods, king of kings, and God of the ages." "The beast will be overcome, because he has met the one to whom everyone will ultimately be subordinate. The armies of heaven share his victory as well." And we'll see that in chapter 19. "Those who overcome will exercise the authority of the Lamb over the nations of the earth, and will rule them with an iron scepter." We read that in Revelation, chapter 2, verse 26 and 27. "The concept of the righteous taking part in the destruction of the wicked is a standard apocalyptic theme." Let's see, Mounts, or, I'm sorry. So Keener includes the idea. "King of kings had long been applied to supreme rulers of the east. We actually see it in Ezra, and Ezekiel, and in Daniel. And was now used as the title of the Parthian king, Rome's most feared earthly nemesis. More significantly, Jewish people regularly applied these titles to God. Uh, this true ruler over the earth's kings contrasts with Rome's control of mere client kingdoms." So once again, Keener's pointing out the difference between the Roman and Parthian empire. At this time, the Parthian empire had lost a major battle to Rome, and so now they were a client kingdom to Rome. So they were paying their dues to Rome on a yearly basis. So the victory of the Lamb. So "Those who are with him are the called and chosen and faithful." And so like I was talking about, it's a common apocalyptic theme, that those believers that had been selected to be with him at that time, it could be all believers, or it could be those, kind of blessed are those that participate in the first resurrection. Sure, are these the ones that are coming, that are maybe participating in the first resurrection? Or are these already on the earth? Is that what you're asking? So, they're believers, but as far as have they come up from the first resurrection? Or were they already on the earth, and just collected by Messiah when he comes? We just have what we have right there. Now, if we were to cross-reference that with Battle of Armageddon, or different places, like, there's some logistical issues, but I'm sure that God has a plan for that, so. Well, and we'll actually get into that battle, um, here really soon, in the next couple of chapters, so that's... There's a, a very, there's a full spectrum of that, like, within apocalyptic literature. Now, mind you, if we just stick with Revelation, and then a lot of the, the major and minor prophets, there is a lot more about those battles, right? Uh, that people could actually read into the end after Jesus comes back. Some of those you might just think of like, oh, wait a second, that is, you know, from back then, from the Babylonian invasion, that's from, uh, the Hellenistic, the Greek invasion, that's from Rome, or something like that. Uh, but some people actually read those into the end. So what we're thinking about is, you know, Jesus just setting foot here on the earth, and boom. All the bad people die or disappear, or both. Of that time, like, what they envisioned was an actual, like, warfare. This leads into the expectations around Jesus as the Messiah, because as they are thinking, is he the one? And he's going around not killing people, but healing people, they're framing that in the idea of like, yeah, I'm fighting next to that guy. Because if I get stabbed, well, he can just heal me, and I'm back in the fight. So it's an interesting framework, when you think about the struggle that they had in the first century, and how they were projecting that onto Jesus. Even seeing his healing in a very distinct messianic way. So, so what they're envisioning is, like, struggle and warfare. Now, it's not necessarily what we have listed here. In other places, we will, and actually as we get into the next few chapters, we'll probably be pulling more from the major and minor prophets. Pablo, give me all kinds of trouble tonight. Alright, what verse are we talking about? 2:10. So, as we, as... So these letters were written to cities of that time, who were experiencing persecution, or, you know, different temptations, or different issues from within their fellowship. So, like, and if we remember back a year and a half ago, that there was a point where people were imprisoned for 10 days, after which time they were either killed or released. So. Alright. Alright, verse 15. "And he said to me, 'The waters which you saw, where the harlot sits, are peoples and multitudes and nations and tongues.'" So now, at this point, we're getting an explanation, right? So the angel who is guiding John is now interpreting the vision, verses 15, 16, 17, and 18. So we've already read a little bit, 17 and 18 before, with the ten horns, but now we're gonna go back through. And so, "The waters which you saw, where the harlot sits, are peoples and multitudes and nations and tongues." So, the angel continues his interpretation by identifying the waters upon which the prostitute sits, as peoples, multitudes, nations, and languages. This four-fold grouping stresses universality. The imagery of the waters comes from Jeremiah 51, verse 13, which we read a couple of weeks ago, where Babylon is pictured as dwelling on many waters, or by many waters, of reference to the Euphrates and its system of waterways in and around the city. For John, the symbol serves to emphasize the vastness of the power of Rome, the capital city of the entire Mediterranean civilization. If you've ever seen the old maps of Rome, their territory goes all the way around the entire Mediterranean. So if you think about all the rivers and tributaries and everything else coming off of the Mediterranean, I mean, Rome had ventured into deep on three different continents. And what was included in that were different peoples, different multitudes, different nations, different languages. All of that encompassed in the Roman Empire. Verse 16, "And the ten horns which you saw, and the beast, these will hate the harlot, and will make her desolate and naked, and will eat her flesh, and will burn her up with fire." So here we have, "The fate of the prostitute is now related in phrases reminiscent of Ezekiel's vivid allegory of Oholubah." So Ezekiel, chapter 23, let's go there. Oholubah, not to be confused with Ohola. No, really, is the other figure mentioned in this chapter, just for clarity, right? "Now her sister Oholubah saw this, yet she was more corrupt in her lust than she and her harlotries were more than the harlotries of her sister." So then it just goes through, all the way to 25. "She increased her harlotries. The Babylonians came to her to the bed of love and defiled her." Verse 22, "There Oholubah thus says the Lord God, 'Behold, I will arouse your lovers against you, from whom you were alienated, and I will bring them against you from every side. The Babylonians, and all the Chaldeans, Pakht, Shoa, Koah, and all the Assyrians with them, desirable young men, governors and officials, all of them officers, men of renown, all of them riding on horses. They will come against you with weapons, chariots, and wagons, and with a company of peoples. They will set themselves against you on every side, with buckler and shield and helmet, and I will commit the judgment to them, and they will judge you according to their customs. I will set my jealousy against you, that they may deal with you in wrath. They will remove your nose and your ears, and your survivors will fall by the sword. They will take your sons and your daughters, and your survivors will be consumed by fire.'" So, pretty horrific, pretty graphic, right? Uh, Ezekiel, chapter? 23, verse 11. 11 to 25. So, with Ezekiel prophesying, and how, in reference to Oholubah being a prostitute and interacting with the Babylonians and the Assyrians, that they were going to turn against her. "So the turning of the beast against the woman who sits on it speaks of a terrible and mysterious law of political history, according to which every revolutionary power contains within itself the seed of self-destruction." Let me read that one again. "This turning of the beast against the woman who sits on it speaks of a terrible and mysterious law of political history, according to which every revolutionary power contains within itself the seed of self-destruction." It describes the self-destroying power of evil. "The wicked are not a happy band of brothers, but precisely because they are wicked, they give way to jealousy and hatred, so that the climax, their mutual hatreds, will result in mutual destruction. The woman who was once arrayed in purple and scarlet and adorned with jewelry..." Revelation 17, verse 4, "is now stripped bare. The eating of her flesh suggests wild beasts tearing at the body of their prey, and portrays the fierceness with which the prostitute is attacked by her assailants. One is reminded of the bloody scene when Jezebel..." Is anybody else already thinking of that, Jezebel? "...having been thrown from the window and trampled by horses, was then eaten by the dogs except for skull, feet, and palms of hands." 2 Kings, chapter 9, verses 30 through 37. We'll get there eventually. "Finally, the prostitute is burned with fire. Leviticus teaches that if the daughter of any priest defiles herself by becoming a prostitute, she is to be burned in the fire." Leviticus, chapter 21, verse 9. "So also is the man who takes a wife and her mother also; the three shall be burned in the fire." Leviticus 20, verse 14. Well, the line definitely ends there. There, there's no coming back from that one. And so, yeah. Not to make light of a very horrible thing. Shame on me, so. Sorry, conscience just got to me there, I'm like, making a joke of that. Alright, verse 17. "For God has put it in their hearts to execute his purpose by having a common purpose, and by giving their kingdom to the beast, until the words of God will be fulfilled." Does everybody see where this is kind of coming from? Like, you can hear the echoes of it from Ezekiel, kind of that comparison there. "So the angel explains that it was God who brought about the slaughter of the prostitute by putting it into the hearts of the ten kings to do his will. They were of one mind in relinquishing their sovereignty to the beast, and joining in his assault upon the prostitute. And in his final campaign against the Lamb..." This verse denies the existence- this verse denies the existence of any ultimate dualism in the world. "In the final analysis, the powers of evil serve the purposes of God. The coalition between the beast and his allies will continue until the words of God, the prophecies leading up to the overthrow of Antichrist are fulfilled." Once again, as we are reading all of these things about persecution and all these horrible judgments and different things, just remember that God is sovereign, that these are all leading into his purposes. That is something for us to be encouraged by. And even, like, for persecution, it is a refinement. And it clarifies our priorities in this life. So it's something that, as we meet it head-on, the spirit can guide us, can encourage us, to cause us to recall the words of God and to dwell on those and be encouraged by it. So that we can stand firm in the faith and continue to minister, preach the gospel boldly. Verse 18, "The woman whom you saw is the great city which reigns over the kings of the earth." For the fourth time in this chapter, the angel identifies and interprets a figure in the vision. The woman is the great city that rules over the kings of the earth. For John, the city is Rome. She is the wicked seducer whose pernicious influence has permeated the city, has permeated the whole of the Mediterranean world. Yet Babylon, the great source of universal harlotry and abomination, is more than first-century Rome. Every great center of power that has prostituted its wealth and influence restores to life the spirit of ancient Babylon." This is why, read and understand, so even for all the Babylon references, so what we're doing in reading this as John, it being revealed to him of Rome, and Rome, like, as he's writing, recalling Babylon, as we're talking about this and reading it and recalling back to Rome, it's exactly what John did with Babylon. Right, so we see this, and we can see this pattern, right? So, just to read that last line again, "Every great center of power that has prostituted its wealth and influence restores to life the spirit of ancient Babylon." Let's see, Mount quotes from a scholar, uh, whose name is Schick. Words on symbol and history are worth repeating. "As almost always in Revelation, the symbol reaches beyond the unique historical situation and becomes a criterion valid for all ages. History does not repeat itself, it is precisely the nature of history that it deals with a unique occurrence in unique circumstances. But despite all concrete uniqueness, on another, more fundamental level, something similar can occur every time. There runs parallel with the process of history. So Revelation sees it, and it is essential to its concept of history, a reality which is present in each transitory manifestation. It harbors within it the real event behind any event. This process is depth. The, this process in depth is however, not immediately discernible, it can only be grasped and represented by way of symbols." Man, so basically what we just said with, whether it be Babylon or Rome, or put an empire here, at the core, there is something that stands against God, whether it be in its wealth, luxury, in this complete distraction from what the mission of God is, or the will of God for the believer. And so, God used Babylon as punishment for Judah, right? So it's a great illustration of how wicked Babylon was still used for God's purposes. Judah had lived in rebellion against God, not giving the land rest. So Jeremiah prophesies. And it's because of the land not receiving its Sabbath that they were taken out of the land for 70 years. So God is using this wicked nation to take his people and for them to learn obedience. But then there's a faithful remnant that comes back, right? And so still, even with Rome, think about Roman roads, think about all the things of the Roman Empire, it made for the gospel to go throughout the world. Even in the destruction of Jerusalem, it forced the apostles that were still there to leave and to scatter throughout the world. So even in persecution, God was still accomplishing his purposes. But at the core, we have these similarities, and that's kind of what is being highlighted in this symbolic, in this vision. The decline and fall of the Roman Empire, Edward Gibbon, that'll take care of the rest of the year for you. No, there's, actually, I'm sorry. Is there, you know what, I'm sure there is. There's some great YouTube videos, so, no, but, I mean, really, like, YouTube is pretty awesome. But, yeah, as far as, you know what, let me, uh, I'll bring in some resources on Rome next week. So, some of my favorites, and can look up a few others. Uh, persecution coming to the church, but, you know, judgment coming upon empires and everything else, yeah. Sure, we condense that in two minutes. So I think the idea is that as believers lived in Rome, it's clarifying their allegiance to Christ, not to Caesar, right? But they still lived in accordance with those laws as a testimony to those that lived around them. But they were not sucked into the culture of Rome, whether it be the imperial cult or the deceptiveness of wealth and luxury, that was not, and it's not wrong to have those things, but when that is the sole trajectory of your life, that is where it becomes detracting from the path that God has called us to walk. So, in the same way, where is the allegiance? And I think we see that illustrated, and this was highlighted in our Philippians study a year and a half ago, um, where, as Paul has talked to them, like, basically what allegiance to Christ looks like, as opposed to an allegiance only to Rome, or to Caesar, or to burning Caesar, burning, uh, incense to Caesar in worship that was compulsory. It's willing to undergo that persecution. So, what does that look like for us today? It is evaluating all of those things. Is our allegiance to Christ above nation? Above clubs and affiliations? Above everything? King of kings and lord of lords? Like, that is what we have committed to, to Christ. And then it's seeing everything in our lives and culture through the lens of Christ. And not being distracted by the things of this culture. Whether it be, I mean, just the full spectrum of things, whether it's politics, whether it's economic matters, whether it's whatever it is, everything is seen through the lens of Christ. Cause that is where our hope is, that is where our salvation is, is only in Christ. And so, for believers in Rome, for believers in Babylon, it all comes down to representing Christ. Representing Yahweh.